All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's December 2nd, 2020, and we will begin with the public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much. We have an amendment to our agenda?
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda to include Monroe County policy for county support for local business, not-for-profits, and government units in a manner similar to the federal cares funding.
Second? Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Excellent. Any comments? Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Great, thank you, sir. And next, we will have department updates. We'll begin with Ms. Cottle. Good morning.
Good morning. I am going to frame everything I have to share with you today in a positive light. So I think we need some good news, right? So we'll start with probably the least of it, but Monroe County is not moving in terms of the color-coded map. We're not moving to red, so that's the good news. We are remaining in orange, however, and we would like us to return to yellow and then see blue on that metrics map. The, so I have a challenge for everybody, and that's that we continue to do everything that we can to continue to slow and to reverse the spread of COVID-19 in the county and our state and our nation. We have the tools. We talk about it every week. Think about Smash, that six-foot distance. We know that masks have benefit. They make a difference, avoiding crowds of any size with people who are not distanced or masked, staying home when we're sick, and good hand hygiene. Those are the tools we have, and we, we can use those to reverse that and leave orange and return to yellow and to find blue. But at least we are not in red this week, so that's, that's a good thing there. On a better front, I think people are probably hearing a lot about vaccine, and we know that vaccine is coming. It will be a while before it is widely available to everybody, but it is good news that it is coming. We do expect emergency use authorization soon, and vaccine to be available in the state to our healthcare workers later this month and as early as mid-month. So that, the state has a plan for that. We've submitted our local plan for distribution, and we continue to work on fine-tuning that and how we will do other smaller events in terms of getting vaccine out. The state's allocation initially, it will go to our hospitals, will go to healthcare personnel who, in their line of work, have the potential for exposure to COVID-19 patients or infectious materials. And all of this is tiered, and of course, it's based on how much vaccine comes at a time and, and how that will be portioned out. But know that we can continue to practice, use our tools now, practice those prevention measures that we have, so that we don't continue to spread the virus while we are awaiting vaccine to come, and know that it is on its way, and that is a good thing. So those plans are, are underway and will soon be starting to vaccinate healthcare professionals. And that means that, you know, there's, it doesn't mean that there'll be fewer people in the hospitals, but we can, we can help that by practicing those prevention tools that we talked about, but also that we can alleviate some of the stress and strain on our healthcare professionals in those settings by having more adequate staff, that they don't have as many staff who are out ill because they are protected. Testing, testing continues to be in high demand. We do have our community testing site open. It has appointments available. To date, we have done about 700 tests, and we have about a 3% positivity rate within that. We are getting ready to start taking some walk-in clients as time will allow us, and we'll see how that goes. We've talked before about the registration process, that platform that's used for the community testing sites is a little longer, a little more cumbersome, and that does make, helping people who just walk in, helping them, that takes a little longer. So we are going to start trying to see some walk-ins, just know that we'll work them in as best as we can, and we'll work through those challenges. All of the labs, of course, with high demand, there can be a delay in testing results, and we see that across the state with various sites. So it can take anywhere from two days. Unfortunately, in some cases, it can take seven or eight days, and that's way too long, but it is kind of part of what's going on. The state is bringing on some additional labs to help reduce the burden on the labs and help state turnaround time for our community testing sites. So we hope that that will be improved. We have been in communication with the state as well as other county health departments. We're all experiencing the same issue. Some of the results are actually in, but it's just being able to access them that there have been some challenges with. So we're also working on how we, at the local level, may be able to help individuals get their test results back quicker if there seems to be a problem. So know that we are working through those things. You know, I've had some people say, and we're thrilled the Optum site is here, right, but I've had some people say, you know, well, it's very efficient, and it's seeing all these people on the community site, you know, isn't doing X, Y, or Z. But remember that when the Optum site opened, it wasn't doing those things either. It took time, and we had challenges and barriers we had to work through with that. They did not see walk-ins right off the bat. It took a while before they were able to do that. So all of those same things that we're seeing with the community sites, we saw with the Optum site. So do be patient, but know that there are appointments available. We encourage you to make your appointment at a convenient location for you. So, the last thing that I have is that the CDC is releasing a change to quarantine guidance, and that should be posted later today or tomorrow, along with some frequently asked questions about that. So the quarantine time has been 14 days, which is the incubation period for COVID-19. The incubation period is not changing, but what the information we have has shown is that after day 10, the likelihood that you will zero convert is much, much lower. And so it's a benef, kind of a cost-benefit process. So people can stop quarantine after 10 days, and this, of course, is asymptomatic people, because if you're symptomatic, you're going to test, and if you're positive, you go into isolation for 10 days. And if you're negative, then we know that, that you're not infected. But if you can't, if you can't get testing, then 10 days is the new quarantine period. You do need to continue to monitor for symptoms for that full 14 days, just in case something might happen. But also, if you have testing available, you can test after day, on day five or after, and if that test is negative, then come day seven, then you can be released from quarantine as well. So if you test on day five and you get your test results back on day six, you still wait until day seven to be released, but knowing that it may take a couple days to get those test results. So seven days will be the minimum quarantine time. So seven to 10 days will be the, the new quarantine time, but everybody will still need to monitor for symptoms for that full 14 days. So that's some good news. It's based on the information, and we've been at this almost a year now, and so we've learned a lot. And as science gives us information, we can change our, some of our processes as well. So those are the good news things that I have to share with you today. And just to finally say that we can again get through this, we need to kind of stay the course with our prevention measures, and when vaccine is ready for you, please consider taking the vaccination. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, when the vaccine becomes available, I know that it's going to require two doses a month apart from each other. Will, can people be considered to be inoculated after the first dose, or is it not until the second one?
Thank you for asking that, because it's a really good question. Usually, when we do vaccines, say for measles or something like that, you get that initial vaccine dose, and you get the bulk of your immunity from that first dose. And the second dose that you may need, and I, that may have not been the best example, but think hepatitis. The second dose is really more of a booster, right, to kind of boost you up and build that immunity higher. With this vaccine, it appears that it is the second dose that really gives you that immunity, that the first dose will get you started, but you're not going to see that high level of immunity until you get that second dose. So it is going to be really important that people get both doses of this vaccine.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is a great question. And that second dose doesn't become effective immediately, just like the flu vaccine, right? You still have to wait the seven to 14 days, or whatever they'll tell you, yeah.
Yes, we've got to wait for our body's immune response, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
There's a question from Lisa Ridge in the chat, saying that if there's an employee out for 14 days, quarantine just because of having close contact, can they now come back after 10 days at this point?
If the, well, what I would say, there are two things, is in terms of county policy, I'm going to say that's a commissioner decision. And I would say, as a business, I would not make the change until the CDC has officially released that guidance and has it posted, which should be later today or tomorrow, in terms of what we've been told. I have looked a couple times on their website. I haven't seen it posted yet. I know that there will probably be, you know, some fine tunings. The information I have is what the state provided us yesterday. And again, it's based on what they were told. So until we see it and can really say this is exactly what it is, I would not make any change until that time in, in official capacity. But in short answer, I would say, you know, yeah, probably as soon as that's posted and the commissioners say we can go with it, then you may have somebody who's back at work earlier rather than later. And of course, when we talk about, you know, this is really kind of for that general public, there are certainly critical infrastructure employees who have different sets of guidance in terms of quarantine, and some people have to work anyway because of the jobs that they have. And so, but this is still good news and should make everybody feel better.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate you as always, your staff, Dr. Sharp, and the health board, of course. So thank you all for everything you do. Thanks. Now we'll turn to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management.
Good morning. I want to start with reminding the public that Friday is the first Friday of the month, and so that is the day we test our sirens. And we do those tests at noon and at seven. It seems that every month we get questions, why are those sirens going off at seven? So just real quickly, we have, we are very fortunate in Monroe County that we have two dispatch centers. We are one of the only counties in the state of Indiana, but due to Indiana University that takes all of their calls from all of their campuses right here in Bloomington, we have two dispatches. And so because of that, we have an opportunity to have both dispatch centers tone off our tornado sirens in the event of an actual tornado. And so we need to test both of those systems. And we, one of, we, our plan is that our central dispatch is our primary as always, but that Indiana University is their backup, and we want to make sure that at all times, their system is working and functioning properly as well. And so that's why we do two tests every month, so that both systems can be tested. And we do them one during the day and one in the evening, and that allows individuals that are those dispatchers to test the system and practice act, making that activation. There are many different buttons and bells and whistles that it takes to set those off, and so it allows a day member to set that off at the noon test, and then an evening second shifter to do it in the evening. And so we rotate what dispatch center is activating in the day. If so, if this month, if Central's doing it at noon, then next month, they'll be doing it, then IU will do it at noon. And so that way, the day tests, the day dispatchers also get a rotate out and get to have that activation practice as well. So hopefully that will answer some of your questions, and it does only, does only sound for a test for 30 seconds. If it's an actual tornado, it is a five-minute link sound. So it is a shorter, a shorter sound that you have for the test. We are getting into that winter weather. We've had a couple days where we were kind of starting to monitor the weather with road conditions this week, and fortunately, we've been pretty blessed. Last year was a pretty mild winter, I, I would say, and so far this year we have as well. But I also want the public to know that we work closely with our county highway department as well as our sheriff's department. And once we start getting word in advance that there is potential for weather, we coordinate early, early in the morning to see if we need to have any of our travel ordinances activated. And there are three stages of travel. So for the public to know, there's a yellow, which is just a watch. There could potentially be slick spots out. Watch for bridges, intersections, use extra precaution. And then it moves to the orange color, which is an advisory, and that is, you know, you should really only be out if you're traveling to and from work or picking up medicine. Try to make your selections very slim if you have to get out. And then lastly, then there is the warning, which is our red color, and that is something that we would activate in the event of where we were asking no one to be on the roads except for our public safety and our highway drivers. And this allows them, of course, to clear those roads for emergencies and such. And so just for the public to be aware of those stages, we do implement those, and then we put an Everbridge message out if we have to move it to a travel ordinance. So if you have not yet signed up for Everbridge, it is on our homepage, and we encourage you to do so, so that you can be aware of our roads and the conditions of our roads through that system. If for some reason, we would need to, if, if OptumServe or if the testing site on Morton would have to close early due to weather or for any situation regarding a disaster, we will make a notification through that Everbridge system for those testing sites as well. So another good reason to get signed up for Monroe Alerts. You can also, we also send out the health warnings when things change within our health orders, as well as any weather-related events that you can click and choose which ones you'd like to receive notifications on. We are continuing to work with the vaccination pod sites, as Ms. Cottle mentioned. You know, it takes a lot of different resources and a lot of different people to make the logistics of those vaccine clinics work. And so we've been working with the preparedness coordinator and, and the health department staff, assuring that they have everything they need, so that when we do in fact get those vaccinations in the springtime, that we will be ready to rock and roll and set those pod sites up. And then lastly, I want to just mention, we've got two blood drive dates. They're December 21st for our, our daytime, which is between the hours of 10 and 3:00. And then the second site is December 23rd, and that's our evening site. It's between the hours of 2:00 to 7:00. I did get a report on our November drives. Unfortunately, with the holidays, I only have a report from the first drive. The second drive statistics haven't yet come in, but from the beginning of March, when we started the COVID blood drives, including the first blood drive we had in November, we have saved the potential of 1,341 lives and collected 447 units of blood. So we'll add that second blood drive in November that we've already had and get those numbers, and then we have these two blood drives in December. So I know at one time, our goal was to see if we could potentially save 1,000 lives, and I'm thinking we could hopefully potentially save 1,500 to 1,600 at this point. So kudos to Monroe County. If that's something that you can and are willing to make a donation of, those dates again are December 21st and December 23rd. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Moore. That is good news. Now, look at, let's see if your comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to say regarding the vaccine, that while it's very exciting that it's going to be available, we are all going to have to be patient, and for most of us, it's going to be a while till we see that.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the blood drives. I did the evening one and found it really nice, because I get tired a bit after donating blood, and I could just go home and collapse. I didn't have to go try to work again. And when I was there, I was talking with the, the staff, and they said, yes, everybody who had been registered to come at that point had shown up. So again, kudos to our community. It's just people really pulling together.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Moore. And now we'll turn to Ms. Ridge. Any updates on the highway department?
Good morning. Not a lot to speak of. We did do the pre-treating on Monday and stayed ahead of any weather system. We did not have any issues on Monday night. A couple slick spots on, on Tuesday morning, but I think the pre-treating that we've started to do more often really since, it seems to help and saves with overtime and such in the department. So I really don't have, hopefully, we're slowing down with road construction season right now, so.
Great, yeah, that would, that is true. And let's see if we have comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Ridge.
Thank you.
All right, next, Sheriff Swain.
There we go. I am here to give an update on the Lexipol policy program. When the commissioners approved paying the annual renewal fee for this program, Commissioner Givens asked that updates be given and at certain increments. So this is my first update on this program. At the present time, members of my command staff and a, a program manager have worked two, three times a week going through program or policies and procedures. And at this point, we are at about 80% completion. Some agencies are taking over a year to get this done. We began just a few months ago. Policies, as they have, as they have been approved, are pushed out to the deputies, and once they are pushed out in this program, they are in effect. So we're not waiting for this program to be completed and then sending everything out. Among the, what we've done, just to update, is we had a mix of policies dating back to the 1980s up until the present administration. We fed all of these policies and procedures into Lexipol. They have a shell based on Indiana statutes and best practices, federal law, case law that applies to Indiana. And we merge everything together for a searchable policy that's at the fingerprints of, or fingertips of the deputies. At this point, we've also created new procedures. We found that there are some obligations that we were supposed to have statutorily, such as a safety officer, OSHA regulations. One of the things, and I think this will show up, is that on each employ, each merit deputy's phone is, in addition to having this policy at their laptop, they also have it available on their phone. Here, right now, is a copy of the manual, and as new policies are pushed out, each employee has to read and acknowledge that they've read the new policy. And we will be including daily training bulletins that are customized to our specific policy and procedure. And depending on a deputy's specialty, things that may be going on, where we want to make sure deputies are up to date on our procedures, these are all at their fingertips. In addition to that, the, with a given policy, if we have forms or documents that should accompany that, they are included in that same policy. So this will be the place that deputies will turn to for not just reviewing policy and procedure, but to also find other documents and things they may need on a given issue. We estimate that our complete conversion will be done by the end of January or earlier. And, you know, I can't speak highly enough of the employees who have contributed to this. There are some agencies that take over a year, and some never do after spending this money, never do stick with getting this accomplished, and Lexipol actually has to drop them because they're just not keeping up with the workload. And I'm really looking forward to it. Part of the funding came on a federal grant for all Indiana sheriffs to join with Lexipol for this program. I am hopeful that if there's leftover grant money, that that may transfer to the jail divisions across the state as well. That is a separate program. Cost is based on bed space rather than employee levels. But at this point, we found this is going to be pretty useful. There were some hiccups with the company on the template that they offered up, that several sheriffs had a meeting with Lexipol about. But overall, we're pretty happy with what this is going to do for us.
Great, thank you so much, Sheriff Swain. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds like a really very exciting program. It sounds like it'll probably be able to increase efficiency a whole lot. I was wondering if that might possibly lead to a little bit less in the way of overtime?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think it will streamline the work that deputies do, that they have the information at their fingerprint or finger, I've been talking with my evidence technician about equipment, so I'm saying fingerprint, at their fingertips. But, yeah, I'm not sure how it may affect overtime.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm really pleased that it's moving forward so, so rapidly, and that it helps bring us in compliance with all kinds of different statutes. Kudos to everybody.
Yeah, one of the other things is, we can take these policies that the public may have an interest in. They don't have to see every single policy or would want to. or would want to. But say with things that have been going on the past few months, our use of force policy, we can push these out onto our department webpage. So rather than fielding questions and sending out copies to different people, we can anticipate different topics and just make that readily available for anyone wanting to research a given question of a different topic. And so I think that's going to be useful as well.
It's a great idea. I think it would be really useful to do that. Great. Excellent. Thank you, Sheriff Swain. We appreciate you being here today and sharing that update with us.
You're welcome.
All right. So next we have Mary Elfman, our county's veteran service officer.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you guys a little update on the fact that we were not able to establish the Toys for Tots locations in county buildings because it does require that it be a building that's open to the public. And of course, we're not. So I can recommend for, excuse me, three different locations for you to donate to the Toys for Tots. Here I go looking for it. The Andy Moore dealerships, both on Liberty Drive, both the Honda and Hyundai dealerships have donation boxes. It's my understanding that the Indianapolis Toys for Tots organization will pick up at those locations on December 12th. So I'm going to ask you, if you'd like to make a donation, please do it prior to the 12th. Five Below apparently might have a donation box. If you're not familiar with that, it's a discount store over in the little strip mall. And the Joie de Vivre Medical Office on Bloomfield Road also offers the opportunity for you to drop off a new toy unwrapped to give to a child who does not have anything from Christmas.
Right.
There's also a way for you to make online donations. I will put that link in the chat.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm just very pleased that it is able to go forward in some fashion.
Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, thanks for the reminder about all the things that go with it, unwrapped and new and those things. Do they have any kind of preference for the age?
No. All children, you know, anywhere from zero to 18. They have all these childrens that apply. Some of them are channeled through the Salvation Army. And in the Monroe County area, unfortunately, the signup for toys from the Salvation Army has already closed. But I'm sure there are other organizations that if you have a need for a child's Christmas, you can reach out to them. And they can probably help you access those toys.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Elfman. We appreciate you being here today and sharing that information.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Ms. Barb Uli from Washington Township.
Oh, there I am.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning. So I apologize for missing the last meeting. Life kind of got hectic. As of right now, in regards to, we've had two deposits of $25,000 each into the Township COVID Fund. As of right now, and we actually, we meet next Tuesday, we are at $73.10 remaining of that $50,000. And I had reached out to you. The others in the committee and myself were wondering if it was prudent to get the remainder of the fund prior to the end of the year. But then in the interim, you added to the fund. So I'm not sure that getting larger than a $25,000 deposit is necessary at this time, with the exception that we seem to, we seem to every month be hitting that $25,000 mark. And I got a message from Kim Alexander, Bloomington Township trustee, and the article's in the paper on Saturday, obviously. And by Tuesday afternoon, they had already received 17 calls for township assistance where their normal is four to five. So I can see that December is probably going to be a bigger month. And so we are probably going to go over that $25,000 this month. That is basically everything that, well, I can tell you the November, we paid to Perry Township $4,280.88. Bloomington Township received $1,280.88. And Richland Township received $4,372.01 for November.
Great. Thank you for that information. So we can go ahead and release at least the next $25,000. Looks like my colleagues agree. For our, per the agreement that we have, that would be appropriate. So Ms. Purdy, if you could get that check ready. You got it ready so fast last time. We can get it right into their hands. And then if you could either email or send someone to our meeting as soon as you need the typical, the next typical allotment for the Township Assistance Fund, then just let us know as soon as you know that you're at that point.
I can do that.
Great. Excellent. So that is, it's sad news, but it's good news that people are reaching out.
I think it's very good news that people are not, people seem to be proactive at this time, which is good because as trustees, we are so accustomed to people reacting to the bad news that, and at that point in time, they're tying our hands considerably. So it's nice to see that people are looking ahead and realizing that, you know, December is not an easy month and that there is assistance. And again, the townships truly appreciate the commissioners setting up this COVID fund for us to better serve our constituents.
Yeah, great. So Ms. Purdy?
Yeah, just real quickly, Barb, could you send me? And maybe you did already, and I apologize if that's the case. But could you send me the breakdown of the use of the funds?
Yes, I will send that out right now.
Great. Thank you. And then I will actually talk with the council office because that money is actually in their particular location, if you will. And we'll get that check ready for you. And I'll talk with the auditor. We may be able to get it for you by the end of this week, if not tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Purdy. Let's see if there are comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
I'm very pleased that this program is helping. It sounds like there's quite a bit of need. And I hope we can, with the help of the council, keep it going as long as there is so much need.
Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, I'm just so grateful that we're in a position to make a difference to families.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you to all the township trustees for going the extra mile to make this happen.
Yeah, let them all know.
Yeah, it means so much. And we've been so blessed to work with the council to provide this program and to create that sort of extra backstop of funding because nobody anticipated COVID when budgets were made last year for this year. And we know that there are a lot of stresses and strains on residents' budgets for rents and utilities and the necessities of life. And if you're in that position, please reach out to your township trustee. You have a township trustee, whether you live in the city, a town, or in the rural areas. So please contact them as soon as possible and try to be proactive, as Ms. Uli suggested. So thank you for organizing everything. And we appreciate having you here today. Because of the holiday schedule, I would say if we're not having a meeting, then you just need to get an email to us if there's additional funding. But again, less, two meetings ago, two weeks ago, I should say. When we met, we went ahead and approved that additional $100,000 to go into next year. So hopefully that will make it. And if we need to look at more, then we can talk about that. So, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you joining us today. Next, we have Eric Schmitz with the Recorder's Office.
Unmute. Let's turn on my video. There I am. Hi. How's everybody?
Morning.
Okay, just wanted to let you know our office is closed to the public for this week and next following the Thanksgiving holiday. We wanted to give it two weeks before we started letting people in. The tentative plan is to let researchers in starting the 14th. But we're going to be paying attention to, you know, the trends and what's going on. Like I said, these are tentative plans. It will be this or more restricted. I expect we'll close again in the same way for two weeks after Christmas for the same reasons. You know, people travel, being a family and doing stuff. And it just, you know, just a precaution. And I personally foresee very limited access to the office until probably mid to late January. Again, we'll be following the trends. For people who need to record things, we still love to have US Mail as a delivery mechanism. And there is also the Dropbox on the north side of the courthouse that we are now sharing with the treasurer. So people can drop stuff off there for recording. And we're also, we've got, you know, half or more of our staff working from home each day on their laptops with just two or three people here present in the office. Just again, to limit contact because, you know, this is a rough time. The holiday time is just a rough time. So anyway, that's all I got. And I suppose I'll talk to you all folks shortly.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This is probably a wise precaution.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes. Thanks for thinking this through and getting those plans out there.
My pleasure. It's what I do.
All right. Thank you. All right. So next, let me see if there's any other department update. If you could, if you are a department head in county government, if you could raise your hand. It's funny, it's only been two weeks since our last meeting and I feel like I'm a little slower on this thing. Two weeks ago. All right, I'm looking. All right, I don't see anyone. So now we will turn to public comments. Public comment is for items that are not on our agenda. And it's limited to three minutes per person. So if you do have a public comment on an item not on our agenda, please raise your hand in Zoom to let us know. I don't see any hands raised. All right. So with that, we will move on to our agenda.
Move to approve the minutes for November 18th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
I sent one correction to Ms. Freeman. Hopefully, get things taken care of.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the minutes for November 18th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve accounts payable for November 25th, 2020, and December 2nd, 2020, and payroll for December 4th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Miller?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
The total for accounts payable was $1,548,607.63. For starters, $244,735.33 was for October food and beverage tax distribution to entities. Next was $194,820.19 for Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield November claims and fees. $117,301.74 was for B and L IT services for a voting machine. And finally, for accounts payable, $110,119.20 for M Jewel tax sale surplus. As far as payroll was concerned, total was $1,529,465.11. $1,078,383.16 was for the main and supplemental payrolls. The remaining $451,081.95 was primarily for taxes and retirement.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Let's see if there are comments or questions from the board. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Githens?
No. I appreciate getting the things in advance to look at.
Thank you. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Go to the bottom of the screen in Zoom and raise your hand if you have any public comment on this item. No hands raised? All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accounts payable November 25th and December 2nd, 2020, and payroll December 4th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will note that we have received three reports. The first is Clerk of the Circuit Court, October 2020. Treasurer's report, October 2020. And the weights and measures report that runs from October 16th to November 15th, 2020. And now we will move on to new business. Commissioner Jones, if you would, please.
Move to approve, to amend the provision of, excuse me, to amend provision of healthcare for incarcerated patients agreement. Fun name, medical services. Fun number, 1,000-34100-0380. In the amount of $61,600. in the amount of $61,612.30.
Second.
Thank you. Commander Crowe?
Good morning. We are wanting to increase our mental health in the jail again with the addition of another 20 hours with a licensed clinical social worker. This would be filling in an evening time, four to eight, nine, something like that. So it would give us more coverage. Although we don't have the number of inmates that we had at this time last year, we are steadily increasing because of COVID. But also with that, we're seeing more people come in that have mental health issues that need to be able to talk to someone like a clinical social worker. We've had more suicide attempts this year. We've had more people that have been placed on medications already this year. So I think adding this extra 20 hours to the already existing contract with advanced correctional healthcare will, will benefit the inmates and the staff here at the correctional center.
Thank you, sir. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just very pleased that we're able to increase the amount of the service available. It has always seemed pretty tragic to me that the way we most often deal with mental illness nowadays is to put people in jail. And certainly, those services are needed in the jail. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Ms. Jones stated, the jails are the mental health facility, the largest mental health facility in the county. And we're seeing more and more of that. It's increasing every day. So I believe it is something that is really needed here.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I hope we can move to a time when mental health issues are appropriately addressed instead of having to incarcerate people or feeling that that's the right place for them to go. But thank you, Commander Crowe, for putting this in place.
Right. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this issue. Looks like there is one hand raised. Gina Arthur? All right. Ms. Arthur?
Hi, guys. Thank you for letting me speak. I also want to thank Commander Crowe for addressing mental health and mentioning just during the pandemic, it's harder for everybody, especially during the holidays. I would be curious who would be in line to receive this job, especially with it being a part-time job. My concern when I was listening to the presentation is that we would be able to attract someone that would be, you know, I don't know, invested enough in a part-time job to do a really good job. I know that I go around and sort of trash center stone, but I've heard a lot of stories about them. And I know that they're sort of a conglomerate that gets a lot of business. So sort of similar to my other concerns, I'm just hoping that whoever you guys choose to do this really important job will be someone that is an independent and not tied to a large organization that's already failing the community. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur.
Can I, onto this, please?
You may, you may, sir.
We contract with a company called Advanced Correctional Healthcare. This person would be employed through Advanced Correctional Healthcare, and they would, we know, we refer to them as ACH. ACH would be responsible for finding the person, vetting the person, doing the interviews, all of that. So they have a large reach. So I'm sure they would find someone that would be willing to work 20 hours a week here and possibly 20 hours a week in another county or another facility. So I don't think there will be an issue getting a qualified person here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you have, have you already had the necessary dollars appropriated for this?
Yes, we, we were able to add that on to our budget when we were doing the budgets with the, with the council.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, I don't see any other hands raised for public comments. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve the renewal of Computer Systems Inc. Agreement. Fund name: Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. Fund number: 1189 in the amount of $1,160.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Schmitz, please.
Hi there again. Okay, you've, you all seen this patient before, and I've probably even said that before. But this is our one-year contract with Computer Systems Incorporated, our software vendor, to provide disaster, disaster recovery as a service. This backs up our entire system, software, data, images, everything into the cloud, off-site, and provides for recovery services of regaining access to the data and the ability to resume the critical operations. It's, it's, it's just part of our belt and suspenders protection plan of, of, you know, doing everything we can to preserve the public record of our office here. It is, it is worth every single penny, even if we never have to use it, and I hope we never have to use it. But it's worth every penny because it allows us to sleep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that it certainly seems prudent to keep this program going.
Commissioner Giffens?
I may have missed it in the contract, but how often do they back up the data?
Oh, it's, it's constant. We will have, we would have up to the minute backup of data, from what I understand. It's, it's everything.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the renewed computer, the motion to renew the Computer Systems Inc. Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Finally.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-50 regarding parks' surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer, good morning.
Good morning. We're asking you to surplus a Ferris mower and a very, very old trailer. The park board voted to surplus this at their last meeting, and they asked for then your permission.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, if that Ferris mower were a horse, we'd say that it had been rode hard and put away wet. It looks like it's the last useful day. Yeah.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised. All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2020-50?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item.
Move to approve Bluestone LLC for tree removal on the limestone greenway. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000 in the amount of $11,500.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, almost all the trees will be felled in, they will be left on-site. If they are near any of the culverts, they will be removed. No debris will be left on the greenway. This is quite a deal. Bluestone, for $11,500, around 60 trees, is, is very gracious of them to do this for us. They have really nice equipment. We'll have park staff out there to make sure no public gets injured while they're taking the trees down.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Whitmer. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you for leaving the debris on the site whenever possible.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And plus, I mean, we'll be looking at replanting small trees in the fall where we take trees out. So there are plenty of young and old healthy trees still on the limestone greenway.
Right. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, no, thanks for taking care of this.
I know this is a heavily treed area, of course, which is why the trail is so awesome. But is there any plan to also be planting some trees in other locations to compensate?
Well, our park staff actually already planted 37 very large trees in all the parks, but we will be looking at the greenways, too, for smaller trees in the fall.
Excellent.
We love trees.
Yes, that's excellent. That's a great idea. Thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised. Okay, seeing no public comment. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Bluestone contract for tree removal on the limestone greenway?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve the Purdue Extension 2021 Contract. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000 in the amount of $119,020.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. And Ms. Thompson is not on this call, so, Mr. Cockrell, will you please discuss the contract since it's?
Yes, this is a kind of a renewal that we do every year. Purdue University runs our, hires the people that runs our extension program, which includes our 4-H Fair and all that kind of support. And we compensate them for the, for the employees that are, that are there. So this is just kind of a renewal of that program. We've done it every year since I have been here, and it seems to be working extremely well.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is just a very valuable service for our agricultural and just regular citizens. And I appreciate Purdue making it available.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was hoping Ms. Thompson would be here so she could talk about how the virtual 4-H Fair had gone this year, but.
I'm sure we will hear from her in the coming weeks about the fair.
Yes.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised. All right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please go ahead and call the roll on the Purdue Extension contract for 2021?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Master Social Worker Contract with Monica Fleetwood Black. Fund name: Lit Special Purpose. Fund number: 1114 in the amount of $4,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Malone, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. We are seeking approval. We do, for this contract, because we do have two masters of counselors that have been hired, and they need a licensed clinical social worker to provide supervision so they can continue to advance and eventually get the LCSW status. We, and so we are hoping that, and Monica Fleetwood Black has worked with us in the past on MC3, and we've known her well, and she's, she's been really gracious to offer this opportunity for us at a really good rate. And so we are hoping to seek approval for that.
Let me see if my, sorry, I muted. My Ollie's out on the porch barking. This is the fun of Zoom meetings. So with that, I know the programs are working well. Let's see if we have comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Once these two employees receive their license, will they then be able to monitor any future employees?
Yes. Yes. In the past, we have had LCSWs and, or that can offer it, but with our recent turnover, we are left with licensed marriage and family therapists who cannot supervise LSWs to LCSWs. And so we've had to go out to find somebody to serve outside of the agency. But they will be able to once they reach their LCSW status.
Thank you. Great. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it looks like they're, they're only covering 48 out of the 56 weeks. Is that because of people going on vacation, or what is that?
Yeah, we planned for some weeks off where people would be taking their vacation, their, their time off that they need. So, yeah, we have, this was Vicky Tevinon, the executive director, and the finance personnel coordinator made the plans. And this, this is the amount they think will suffice for the term.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Master Social Worker Contract with Monica Fleetwood Black?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-54 regarding highway surplus property.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and I think I'm happy to, to present this because we have three dump trucks that are built in the 1990s that we can get rid of because of our program that we have in place to replace ancient equipment. And I think this is ancient equipment. I would say that I was not a graduate of law school when these were purchased. And at least for one of them, I wasn't even out of college yet. So, you know, these will go to auction and be sold for whatever we can get out of them.
Very good. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, they, they look like they're quite ancient.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comments. Maybe somebody who wants to place a bid? No. Okay. Just kidding. All right. There are no hands raised. Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2020-54?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and two of those come with a plow. Okay?
Yeah.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve to award a bid to Bluestone LLC for tree removal for the Curry Pike, Pike Woodyard Road Intersection Improvement Project. Fund name: West Side Economic Development. Fund number: 4920 in the amount of $15,480.22.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Rich?
Good morning. And Jeff, you want to joke about the age of those trucks? I was working here then, when those were purchased. So you just made me feel really, really old. So thank you.
Makes it even funnier.
So with this, this award, or this, this bid to Bluestone LLC for tree removal is for our Curry Pike, Smith Pike, Woodyard Road Intersection Improvement. Due to the time constraint, it will not go to letting until spring, so we want to beat the BAP restriction time. So we have 10 trees to remove in that area for the project. We did send out for three quotes, received two, and Bluestone was the lower bid. Due to the size of the project, we were actually not required to do any mitigation for this project. Due to the size of the project, we were actually not required to do any mitigation for this project. However, I did reach out to the consultant and ask them to put into the contract, when it goes to letting, that we will be replacing to a two to one ratio. So we will find a place for 20 trees to be planted in the case of these being removed.
Great, thank you for that. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Just that this is a really needed project, and I'm very excited to see it going forward. And thank you for going ahead and replacing the trees, especially two to one.
Yes. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I appreciate the fact that the trees are being replaced at two to one. I know it'll take years to get the old growth kind of thing that we've had, but that's really a great plan.
Yeah, appreciate it so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the warning of bid to Bluestone LLC for tree removal for Curry Smith Woodyard Intersection Improvement Project?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-45 Township Appeal Hearing Dates and Resolution 2020-48 Commissioners Meeting Dates.
Second. Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, good morning. This is housekeeping items for you to address right now. But one of the things I want to point out is that the, what has been termed the township hearing meeting dates, is also, we've actually added additional hearing dates, or actual additional hearings to the same dates because we don't have that many appeals that come through. So we have combined the township appeals and animal management issues and persons who have issues with the highway department. And so anybody can schedule on those days. Now, if we have all three scheduled for the same day, we'll have to figure out something. But that's what the original appeal Resolution 2020-45 is addressing, those multiple hearing dates, multiple, how do I say this? Hearings that might be required for different reasons. That's kind of a poor way to say that. Okay, and then the second item that you have is your commissioner meeting dates. That one's pretty simple and straightforward. So that's just so that we can continue into the following year. So do you have any questions for me?
Let's ask her a tough one. Now, Commissioner Jones? I just love asking, under what circumstances? No, I won't. Questions, comments, Commissioner Jones? I have to say, I didn't check every single date on there. Those columns were pretty long.
Yes. Neither did I. But we have great staff that does that for us.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right, with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2020-45 and Resolution 2020-48?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Monroe County Policy for County Support for Local Business, Not-for-Profits, and Government Units in a manner similar to the federal CARES funding.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, the CARES Act provided reimbursements for certain expenditures due to the COVID-19. Part of that act allowed the county to basically act as a pass-through for businesses who had COVID-related expenses. We chose non-payroll expenses, and we had a cap at different periods of time of 10 to 20, then it was raised to 20,000. What this document does is it kind of extends the concept of that, but since we're not working under that federal program anymore, we have to create rules. Our rules are essentially that the amount appropriated by the county council into the COVID-19 emergency response line. Sorry, I had to look at that. We would be where we could pay for this grant program out of. We would allow up to 30,000 for businesses and not-for-profits. We also have a component where certain local government units could apply for this funding. Those would not include ones who had been allocated funding through the CARES Act, which would be Elletsville, Steinsville, and the city of Bloomington. We would use the same criteria, other than the timing, of course, for what are eligible expenses and are, you know, we have staff and contractors are already well aware of those and can handle those. And so this sets up that process. They would, we would have an application similar, if not exactly the same as the one we currently have on our website. They would apply, it would get processed through our contractor and auditor staff. They would make a review, and those they find eligible would be given to the county commissioners for a review. If someone is denied, they would have an opportunity to reapply that, and then the staff would have to make a determination with findings for the commissioners to review and make a final determination on those types of applications. So it's a process that is similar to what we currently have for the CARES Act. It's just got a different ultimate authority in that it would be the county commissioners as opposed to the state or federal entities.
All right, great, thank you so much for working on that. Commissioner Jones?
I'm just very glad that we're able to do this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want to point out that that 30,000 is a cap that is for, the way you've written it, it combines CARES grant reimbursements and reimbursements through this program.
Correct.
Right, so any of the, either the older version of our program, version one and version two of our program, it's $30,000 cap, would be a $30,000 cap for business or social service organization. So the program has been going great. And I know that the businesses that have reached out to the contractor have been grateful and have asked, you know, if this could be continued. So the last version one ended on Monday. We don't have the numbers yet because the contractor is working with a number of businesses to try to get an appropriate, get the appropriate paperwork filed. There's still some gaps and things like that. But as of last week, the total that has been submitted for and approved for reimbursement was $238,880. And these are non-personnel COVID-related expenses that have not been covered by another program, whether it be a grant or a loan or something similar. And for taxing units is $85,713. So if we go ahead and approve this today, could we get the paperwork up by Friday? Do you think?
I think if we get this done today, that that should be easily attainable goal. I think that the bulk of the paperwork is already there. I know we already have an application that has essentially all the information that we need. And so they may have to retitle it and maybe make a few small changes just indicating who the ultimate authority is. I don't think that'll be an issue. I know that the auditor's office is prepared, and this should be done yet today. Kind of a procedures follow-up to this policy that we would want to put on our website as well. I would just note that, and when you read the policy, it indicates that we have an appropriation in the line. As we all know, and I just want to make sure everybody knows, that appropriation will end at the end of this year. In the document, it says it's the commissioner's intent to go to council in January of next year to see if we can get that renewed. So that still has to happen if we're going to go past this month, which is one of the reasons we wanted to get this out as quickly as we could.
Right, so with the holidays, there will be a delay. With the waiting on council appropriation, there will be a delay. There are many points where there can be a delay, but certainly it was a very long process to send each individual claim up to the state and wait, and await funding until the state decided they didn't want to process paperwork. And they have distributed the money to counties. So, and so just be patient, but that is just a good indicator that you need to apply as soon as you need to. There are a number of businesses and social service organizations that have applied multiple times for various amounts under the cap total because that way they could continue to make ends meet. So whatever works for you, that will be great. So we'll work on getting that paperwork together. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There is one hand raised, Jim Shelton.
Okay, Mr. Shelton, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce. We certainly encourage you to approve this, and we very much appreciate all that you all have done for the business community, and in fact, the rest of this community as we've dealt with this pandemic. So thank you very much, and please do approve this and keep going. Thank you.
Right, thank you, sir. Let's see if there's any other public comment on this item.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the continuation of the Monroe County CARES style policy?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. All right, and with that, we don't have any appointments today. We do have a few announcements. So again, for anybody living in Monroe County who is struggling to pay for rent or utilities or other necessities of life, please contact your township trustee as soon as possible. We work with council. Provide, I will also note that to look for, for businesses and social service organizations to look for that new revised program application hitting our website soon as we can. So, but knowing that this is passed today, you can at least get prepared for the submissions. We are going to remain on Zoom through the end of January, and that's assuming the governor's orders are going to support that. So, and I imagine that we will be on January as well. Any other announcements for my colleagues? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, Mary Elfman had said that there might be other agencies that are available to help with families with gifts at Christmas. And I'd like to let folks know that the Pantry 279 runs an elf program, and people can connect with that through Facebook to apply to have, you know, toys for their kids at Christmas time. And I also want to thank again, Hoosier Hills Food Bank and Pantry 279 for the enormous effort they made to ensure that local families had meals, nice meals on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, absolutely. It's quite in operation, and it was a good day to be out there working. So with that, I will just note that we do have Boarding Commission vacancies. And so please, if you're interested in applying to serve on a board or commission, please apply through our website, co.moneroe.in.us. And while you're there, if you haven't done so, please sign up for Resident Alerts because any health orders or any weather or travel-related information will be posted there. You'll be the first to know. And with that, our next meeting is December 9th, right here on Zoom, on your favorite Zoom channel. And unless my colleagues have anything else, for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, and be well.